Nobody else show up?
Oh, man.
Oh, I forgot about that. Right now.
Well, no, I just had a just six rings. I've got three hours of urgent periods for everybody.
We are.
We're good. Okay. I mean, I'd give it that little buffer time.
You know what, finally, I'm really not getting used to this.
Yeah. That's how I come across.
I wonder how much it is. Twenty seconds.
All right, count it.
Yeah, that's called.
Four seconds now.
All right. We are calling the order. Our December Tuesday nineteenth work session meeting. First order of business is pledge the flag. My pledge is to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And keep this, uh, the purpose.
Definitely, Father. We pray for your wisdom and guide us over our meeting tonight. We pray that all of what we do will honor you. We ask for your continued blessings and favor over our city, our state, and this great nation in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's jump right into it. Has everybody had an opportunity to approve the minutes from November council meeting?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Same.
I have a second. Uh, let's see, going down the line, starting with Bob. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
For all in favor, approve the meeting minutes from November. Uh, do we have any further discussion when it comes to the Pendergrass Glen Street's acceptance? And something that we'll be voting on at the next county council meeting?
Uh, that's coming up this next Tuesday.
Correct.
Yep. That is accepted.
All right. All right, so the first discussion after that is to start discussing the possibility of lowering and reducing these speed limits. Glen Abbey, right here in front of us, that's outside of the state DOT area. Uh, did everybody have an opportunity to read over all that kind of get done? Speed limit reduction, right in front of the town center, going all the way down to the barn liquor store area, don't spark one. What do we think?
Yeah, it's gonna be busy.
Got a lot going on down there.
Yeah.
It's unexpected.
What's the proposed?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, now that we have, there's a few other things that are gonna be voted on, uh, starting with the garage sale amendment. Any other further discussion on the garage sale amendment? No. All right. How about the mobile food truck ordinance?
No.
All right. Uh, with these workshops, we're having them every month. We're starting to slow down as far as ordinances. I wanted to kind of bring up, do we wanna continue to have them every single month? Or do we wanna start moving them, uh, every other month? I don't know if I'm enjoying usually the week before the council meeting to have these workshops.
Well, I know we're not enjoying it, but I think it's essential because, again, when you bring up things like, um, the possible gas station, um, that monthly reminder is good for us, and then it also keeps us primed for that week before the actual session. So I do see the value and the benefit of doing these every month.
Okay, so every month, how about earlier in the month?
Two weeks before.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Definitely important to have. I, I was looking at the first Tuesday, uh, but, you know, I'm open to.
Well, the first Tuesday of the month would follow right after the, the session.
It would, yeah.
How about the second Tuesday of the month?
What about everybody else?
I'm good, first and second.
I'm kinda thinking about Bob, kind of the second weekend in the month.
Okay, first one.
Are we, I mean, are we talking about keeping it every month though, or going to every other month?
Uh, Bob was saying every month.
Yeah. What if we did every other month that you call it special, or is that too much perhaps?
As a hand, but is it? Yeah. Actively legally. Then we'll have to advertise to each and every time. That's costing us more money to do it that way. I'd just rather not blow up our budget over advertising something that we could just set up now.
I, I think it's important.
Okay. Everybody else feel the same? Okay. So let's do, let's change this. We'll put in the second Tuesday, seven o'clock still. Give a little bit of a buffer between workshops.
Oh, yeah, definitely. It helps, but I still think that that's very important to have a consistency.
I do want to eventually go down to not every month, because I don't think we're gonna have the need for it every month.
Really?
Yeah.
Do you think you're popping in this town?
I hope they're not just a part of that.
Okay.
Maybe they wishful thinking.
I think so. I definitely think so.
Uh, the next, next thing on the agenda would be, uh, so Pendergrass Glen has in their land use, uh, ordinance that they cannot build a privacy fence, wood privacy fence.
Really?
And there has been several owners now that are asking to change that legally. Obviously, that's the only way that we can do it. It's not an H O A issue, that is a city ordinance issue. Uh, so I don't know how many people have been into the neighborhood of Pendergrass Glen, but now we get to kind of look at.
It is right here.
Yeah.
A little smaller.
Yep. Do we allow that amendment there?
Well, yeah, and, and I was kind of like, you know, if you're gonna put wood fences in there, some of the backyard back up to people's front yard, they're coming out with a wooden fence, that's.
I just don't think there's much room for that.
Uh, their yards, that type of thing. But, I mean, a black iron fence, four feet tall, wouldn't look too bad.
I know their, their discussion with me has been.
They're wanting six foot, Ken.
They're wanting the six foot privacy.
Cause they are so close, they probably won't.
Yeah, so what's the old saying is, uh, uh, fences make great neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay, pardon.
You're welcome for dropping that wisdom.
I'd be okay with it.
A lot.
Wooden privacy fence, why is it all, I mean.
It's a lot, and it's not a home, they're so like, they're close to each other.
It's not aesthetic pleasing to us, but it's their, it's their neighborhood, it's the majority of people want, you know, I'm, I'm either way, but it's not aesthetic pleasing, it looks terrible. You'll ride through other subdivisions that allow it, with houses that close together, and it just doesn't look good. But it's their home, have you ridden through them?
Only once or twice, but again, it's still a privacy fence. I look at it from a safety issue, so six foot privacy fence is okay by me.
I'm hearing a yes, I'm hearing a no, I don't care.
You've got, you've got a no on my.
Maybe, maybe no over there.
On a wood, if it's a iron, black iron.
I think they can actually.
Five feet, that would look nice, it would match the town center, it would flow smoothly. A wooden fence, I mean, I've looked at some of the wooden fences that people have built, Seasons going down three thirty-two, and I don't, I don't know what kind of wood they've used, but it doesn't look, you know, that's what I don't wanna see Pendergrass Glen.
If, if, don't keep it maintained, it's, it's always gonna look bad. It's hard, you like, keep it seasons, if you go to where they have them, it doesn't, it just doesn't suck aesthetically pleasing. Um, but, you know, again, you know, if, if the majority want it, it's their home, and I understand, you know, you got kids, you got pets, and maybe they wanna let their dog run free, so I get the argument both ways.
I wanna look at their neighbors.
Crystal, how you?
I mean.
Is it an I don't know, or an I don't care?
I mean, I kind of agree that it's gonna look bad, I mean, that, I mean, how many people are we talking about to put up a privacy fence?
I've heard of four. Most of them are renters rentals, so I think the majority of them won't.
What's the price, does anyone, I'm sorry. Um, what's the price difference between the fence types, right?
A lot.
Is it higher on the iron fence?
Yeah, metal is gonna be more expensive.
It doesn't give you privacy there.
Right. It'll give you safety.
I see the need.
You get one of them, not a doubt.
But rentals, I don't wanna have privacy, cause I wouldn't want to see the neighbors.
Yeah.
I mean, again, if you have no, if you have new, I, I think privacy. I will say this, once you let one, you can't stop.
Oh, yeah.
You do it.
It would be a complete change.
Yeah, if you say four people wanna do it, and then twenty wanna do it, then you gotta let all twenty do it.
Right, oh, yeah.
I agree, it would be an eyesore, but it's in terms of, uh, two of their yards, it's kind of a double edged sword, but I don't know where I'm at. I'm on the fence.
Oh, we gotta, that accomplished.
I'm on the fence.
We're not.
I'm on the fence with the fence right now. I'm sorry for my call, Phil, but I just wait for my.
Okay, you're over there.
I'll, I'll bet it's, uh, I should be.
What do you think?
I, I, I'm in favor of it, but I don't have a vote. Um, yeah, unless there's a tie.
What's your argument for just, just the hearing?
I, I think within most, as long as you're not impeding on somebody else, uh, I think that we should be gracious with what we allow, what we don't. Uh, you know, if, if, if there's gonna be some kind of impediment on somebody else's property, and there's gonna be issues that way, I think, uh, that becomes problematic. So if you were to build, uh, I'm not even gonna break up examples, cause they'll bite me in the butt later, but, you know, a fence, to me, is not impeding, uh, it's up to the HOA, it's of Seasons, uh, Brooks, uh, or any other neighborhood that allows these wood fences, it's up to their HOA to make sure that they, they're maintained and that's held.
That being said.
With, on the, on the other side of that, uh, as code enforcement within the city continues to be more and more strict, because we did pass a quality of life ordinance this year, and fences are a part of that quality of life.
I couldn't remember what's in it.
Yeah, they're, it's in there. So when we talk about that, and if they really are becoming that bad, uh, you know, the city can step in. We don't want any neighborhood to turn into a spot where it, it's gonna be an eyesore for the city and kind of have that image, right? Uh, I like to reference what's called the, the broken window syndrome, and, uh, once you start having these broken windows or whatever, these exterior features that don't look good, tends to bring down the quality throughout, um, everywhere. So that's gonna be on us to how, how much we want to enforce, how often we wanna enforce that. And we can also partner with these HOAs, which was the entire point of that ordinance anyways, is to make sure that our HOA had a little bit more teeth to be able to enforce these things, so.
I also feel some people want privacy, but on the stuff that grass, they hide their six feet tall grass, is what I feel like.
That's true.
In that house, Diamond's brand new neighborhood, that's what they did. They fenced that crap in, and when you drive by on the hill, you can see their crap is this tall, behind their crap.
You know that? Yeah.
So what are we gonna do about that?
We can, we can address that, but second down, it's up in their HOA.
So how are we gonna see that, though?
Uh, I can see it, you can address it.
Yeah.
But also, and if somebody's gonna be drinking and partying and having a good time, and you got small kids next door, and, you know, you don't necessarily wanna see what's going on in people's yard, you know.
Well, there, there was a reason we took over the, uh, streets of Pendergrass Glen, right?
Well, we will, we will be, if we vote to approve that, uh, next, next week's meeting.
Gotcha, and, and what is the main reasoning on that? Is it that the HOA is not doing what they need to be doing?
Uh, when it comes to street parking in most of the neighborhoods, uh, it's very difficult for the HOAs. Wall and Grove is going through, now Seasons went through it, uh, Pendergrass Glen is going through it, uh, in some spots of Brooks Village, it was difficult. Uh, and what's happening is the HOAs are having difficulty doing that portion, and it becomes a safety hazard for multiple different, uh, for school bus, uh, for package delivery, garbage delivery, pickup rather, uh, emergency service personnel be able to get to residences. Uh, these aren't extra wide roads that accommodate three vehicles wide, uh, so they're not made for street parking, uh, which is why every neighborhood has a no street parking, you know, part of their HOA.
I have a question. Can we, if we were to approve this, could we somehow specify, like, how the fence should look? That way everybody don't have, like, you know, six fence here, and, you know, flat fence here, is that something that we could possibly, like, the nicer looking, you know, you know what I'm talking about? There's different types of.
I have to get back to that. More uniformity.
Does Pendergrass Glen have a HOA?
Yeah, and actually, it just got turned over to residents, uh, they're, they actually have it.
They have it.
Yeah, they, they, uh, they finally got it turned over, I think, in October or November or something like that.
Maybe we could, like, work with the board there to make, you know, like, make sure somebody doesn't decide to paint their fence yellow or purple or some, you know, something goofy, you can't provide.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know what we can regulate in the city, but maybe we could at least work with the HOA to, hey, put these guidelines in about height, color, all that stuff.
Right, make sure it's uniformed and uniformed and uniformed. I mean.
I don't think some of them are stronger, like, they're more durable, how they're set up than others, like, if you do it correct.
Yeah.
And some of them, you see, they just fall over, I mean, there's no.
Well, one thing that we don't have in the city is permitting for fences, uh, what could potentially look into that to make sure your, your structural issues are taken care of. I don't know how we implement that, that's not a question for me, but. I know a lot of other places do have permitting for fences, sheds, and any other structure built on the property.
Yeah, but isn't that an HOA issue?
Uh, well, the HOA would have to approve the style sensing and the actual architectural design of the property, but the city itself could handle it by a structural issue, cause the HOA doesn't, you know, make sure your installation is structurally sound.
Right. Yeah, I'm just thinking about the storage shed, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah. I don't know how far we wanna go down that rabbit hole.
Yeah, this is one of those, I don't want the government in the business, and I don't want the government in the business, and privacy fence is good for neighbors.
Yeah.
Good old government. Good old government. I guess my only thing is just that one road where they back up front of the house.
Yeah.
I would hate that almost walk up my house, the big fence, right, you could actually vote, you could probably open your door and look down, see right into the fence, like that, side of the town, that's right.
Yeah.
I don't know how they plan that, it's all development.
We wanna talk anymore about it? All right, let's go.
I guess we'll post that until next month.
Well, we would, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, you know. Uh, so next thing on the agenda is just, uh, if, if we wanted to have any other discussion concerning the, the two upcoming rezonings, uh, for next week's vote, if you did wanna talk about it, do you think? Great? If not, great?
For that one, uh, I know that Rob said that he had, he didn't have any idea about the design yet. Uh, I know that we do have a vision for downtown. Can we make sure that, that it's somewhat, um, uniform in terms of, uh, what the image should look like? I mean, he said let the market decide. I wanna make sure that, again, we wanna have some kind of uniform, right?
Um, you know, as, as far as I'm concerned, if we would have stuck to what was planned across the street in the town center, I think we would have ended up regarding it again. Uh, yeah, uh, the style's already kind of outdated at that point, and so when they were able to adjust to this new Tudor style, that it does fit the modern times of what's being sold currently, uh, and again, you know, for homes like this, we're wanting to keep up property values, right? And around, we're, we're putting in a lot of effort, putting in a lot of time to make sure that we have nice things coming, especially to our downtown area. Uh, the types of cost that were associated with these types of projects, they're just not cheap.
I'm aware of that, but in terms of the design, style, and aesthetic that we're looking to establish between this space and then right over there.
I know we had one person comment at our last hearing, talking about, you know, our, our downtown looks one way aesthetically, his opinion, and the townhomes at the elevation that Rob brought, which were conceptual, uh, a different way, but I think, you know, I, I don't know if, if he would agree to, um, put a uniformed elevation in part of the conditions. I don't know.
I don't think it, it's not about the elevation, I'm not talking about the elevation, I just mean like I want the style to.
Well, the, the elevation is what I'm talking, that's what it's called, that drawing, uh, the style of the, the actual townhome.
Okay, all right.
So I, I don't, I, I'll talk to Rob and the developer and see what we can add.
All I would add to that is, we've dealt with Rob enough to know that he'll work with the city, he's not gonna just, well, we're throwing this up, you know, he, he seems like a good guy, he wants to keep a good relationship, he's not gonna throw something up that we are against. He, I, I get that they wanna keep it open for adjustments and things that can come up.
Absolutely, I'm all for that.
He's not the type where they're gonna, he wants to keep a good relationship, he's not gonna throw up something that we're against.
Okay, cool.
I haven't seen them do anything like that, but, um, seems like everything they're building is matching together.
All right. I, I don't have the same concern, but I do, especially now that we're seeing the proof in the pudding across the street, um, you know, I'm, I'm really pleased with, especially how the, the, the street place wants that, I don't know how you feel about it, but I'm really, I, I really enjoy those. I know I brought Renee in them.
Yeah, that, that, it's beautiful.
So it's, I, I'm happy with it thus far, uh, and don't have any reservations, and again, I'm happy that there was amendment to that design, because I, I don't, it was gonna be red brick.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Um, it, I'm, I'm happy, like, bright red brick.
All right, well, again, you know what, uh, yeah, I shouldn't be saying anything, cause when it comes to decor, I'm not, I'm not that, never be that.
Do we wanna discuss anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, do we have any opportunities for water? Does anybody else have any brown or yellow wa, yellow water this past weekend?
In the county.
That's Jackson County, right.
It's, 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 it's yellow.
Yeah.
So that means it's been flushed from the system as of this afternoon.
Okay.
Well, they're flushing it round the clock.
Yeah, but they said it's now flushed at the water center, so once the rest of it gets through the water system, it's done.
Yeah.
It's out.
Well, having said that, is there an opportunity for something down the road for us?
As far as the city?
Yeah.
Uh, I think there's always opportunity, uh, nothing that we have right now.
Okay.
There's opportunity, there's always opportunity, but not for that, we can have a commitment towards.
No, no, I'm not saying a commitment, I'm just saying that we can be open to it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're always open for opportunity.
Okay.
I think we all kind of feel the same way, opportunity for, for something. Any other discussion?
What's the, the one we got tonight?
That's, that's, that's not that, that's just something that I handed out to everybody for everybody to have a review.
I guess my question, do we pass all the rezone each week?
Uh.
Is that everything? But, do we, do we have kind of control over how things look? And, I guess that's what I'm.
So you'll get your final rezoning, and you'll be able to look at everything as far as the rezone part, uh, and understand what those details are, and you've seen the conceptual images of what that is, and, uh, so our, our control is in the conditions, so whatever our conditions are, and that's what, with that, what it plays, that's what we hold by law, so number of units and, you know, any of the specifics need to be in those conditions, and make sure there's a cover.
It, it sounds like your question's going back to what Bob asked, um, once it gets approved of rezoning, what's it gonna look like, they build it right, and they'll make sure it looks like everything else in the city.
So what part is your concern right now?
I mean, I just wanna make sure they do what they say they're gonna do.
We would have to make sure that that's put into the rezoning ordinance, and then when it comes to the downtown project, that goes to a contractual agreement between the city and the Bellhurst for this part, uh, and we just have to make sure that all the conditions are put in there appropriately.
What do you do then?
The document's pretty heavy at this point, uh, it's been pretty, it's pretty big, so you'll enjoy that fun reading time as we finish it, but.
Are we gonna get that one down, then, later?
Uh, I hope to finish it soon.
Okay. Give a couple days, we'll go.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Is there anything elaborate?
No.
Renee has requested that it flushes straight towards her, she has a forty-eight hour notice.
Surprise.
Fair enough.
Uh, is there any public comment?
Going back to my opinion on the fences, if you or we decide to do it, is to make it uniform, to make sure that there's no alleyway, so, you know, be, be strict about in the city, if you're gonna allow privacy fence, that it's no alleyway, um, it's stained, it can only be stained this color, as you had mentioned, and just keep it uniform, and that's what it is. If you're gonna do it, this is how it's gotta be done.
Sure. Make sure the HOA has that standard in there.
And in that way, there's no question.
Right.
But that's something the HOA has to do, right? We, we can suggest it, but that's something they have to enforce, right?
I think that, I, I don't know this to be true, uh, I have to start talking to the attorneys at this point, but it's, I think, my thought process is that can be conditional on the amendment, right?
What you're talking about, it's in the city, and right now, the city ordinance is they can't have it.
What you're talking about is in the city, and right now it's city ordinance, so they can't have it. So you're gonna allow it within the city limits.
Put it in those conditions.
From here on out.
Right.
And in that way, take that out of the equation. And then what, uh, enforcement can.
Yeah, cause HOA can end up all over the place, like Brook Village changed four, ten times in the last year and a half. So they can be end up all over the place, so if we can lock in some conditions the city could do, the more the better on that. Because I saw HOA just end up, you know, one group will enforce it, the next year it's changing, then they don't enforce anything. I've lived enough that way, so.
I think HOAs are great, I don't know what you're talking about.
You gonna run HOA president?
Not ever again. In fact, I elevated to the next position there, we went to city council.
This is smooth.
That's right.
Speaking of upcoming events, didn't James say he was gonna host a garage sale for us this year so you could get it in before?
All my trash from my garage. I made that old golf cart, I'm gonna.
You gotta get your permit, Ian.
No, that's not true.
Alright.
Well, anything else?
Merry Christmas, y'all.
Are these kinetic people that are coming to my house, are they getting their permits to come solicit at my home?
Is it the solar panel?
That's a.
No, the kinetic, the people that are taking off my thing out there.
Kinetic is everything.
Yeah.
I've had it.
Do they have their permits? Or have they come to get permits? I might be a bit freaked for three.
What that means is that I'm a driver.
Yeah. Alright, nice job, thirty-two minutes in and out.
I don't know.